Okay, we'll go ahead and start the Ford County Commission meeting. This is meeting number 202241. And all commissioners are in attendance. And we'll move into prayer by Pastor Juan Espinoza, First United Methodist Church, followed by a Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you much for the invitation. Let us bow our heads and let's pray. God have all wisdom and love, give us understanding and guide our efforts with clear insight. We ask you this time to be with us in our work as commission and clarity, so our decision may be according to your proper will. We pass along with the skills in the sermon and judgment as we live into the responsibilities bestowed upon us that we seek to govern our county, where regard to a basis for our health citizens of our county Kansas. Above all else, may we keep securing ourselves that we know to be true, just as fair for our concern that our personal faith gives strength to act honestly and almighty for us, and just in our way pray.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the divine, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so one of the first things we want to do is amend the agenda for an executive session. And we can do that under the county administrative report. We'll just do that right before upcoming meetings. So I make a motion to amend the agenda for an executive session.
No second.
With a motion second, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. First up is our consent agenda with the approval meeting minutes of 2022-36, 37, 38, 39, and 40. And we have a cereal malt beverage license for beauty oil, David Beauty.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
All right, with a motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of claims for payments, this is the amount of $587,897.20. I make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
No second.
With a motion second, any discussion on it? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is the point where we come to open public comment. Please limit it to five minutes per individual, 15 minutes per topic. Final action maybe deferred until the next commission meeting. The microphone is open if you want to come forward and actually speak to the commission about anything. It'll be a record time for this meeting here.
Well, let me throw a mention in.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman, if we don't have any takers on the open public comment, I might take just a quick moment to share. We had KNRC annual policy meeting last Thursday and Friday. Had a lot of great information, had a keynote speaker in, Kent Ivory, who is a representative with Utah House of Representatives, was there to talk to us. Author of a book, Where's the Line? Had a lot of pretty cool information about the Constitution and what roles the government, the government should and does take. Had a, had a great thought that he shared with us there that I'd like to share with you guys. And actually, I've asked for the, for the slide presentation and things like that. If either of you guys would like to look at that, we'll get ahold of that. But he says, you know, you can really, you can really boil down the Constitution to four words. And that is if government, which government? And if you keep those four words in mind whenever you're talking about the Constitution, that is exactly what it, what it, what its whole meaning and what its whole purpose is. If government, which government? The other thing that come out of the meeting last week is, of course, and you guys maybe have heard this already, but the lesser prairie chicken has been listed again. In our region, it is listed as threatened. The southern region is listed as endangered. Also November 30th, and another listing came out for the northern long-eared bat, which covers some of the eastern tier counties and northeastern tier counties in the state. With the increase in membership of KNRC, we are starting to see some of those counties back in that part of the state that are becoming members, so we may, we may be taking that one up as well. Pacific Legal Foundation has already expressed interest in in a lawsuit where KNRC would be a plaintiff regarding the listing of lesser prairie chickens. So there will likely be an opportunity for a vote of all of the member counties, which that'll probably come to our commission meeting individually. And we'll, you know, we'll have a, have a vote on that here and then, of course, the full membership. So anyway, that's all I have on that for now, I guess.
Okay. Moving on, there is no unfinished business, no legal counsel, so we'll go to the county administrative report.
Gentlemen, the first two items are for bond counsel, Gilmore and Bell. And we have Garth here to lead us through the process.
Thanks, J.D. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners, Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the county's bond counsel. It's good to see you again. I'm before you, as the administrator mentioned, for basically the next two items. They all relate to the sale and issuance of the county's temporary notes, series 2022-1, in order to fund the county's obligations under the incentive agreement that the county has with Gilmore. Two of those incentives that are being financed by this note issuance right here is for the economic development grants to help Gilmore with the improvement and preparation of the site for their new manufacturing facility on the south side of town. Pursuant to the authority from when I was out here last time, about a month ago, where you authorized the sale and the request for bids, I've also mentioned that Stan Jones with Stiefel Nicholas and company and the county's financial advisor is here as well. Stan, working with David Artivari, both of them are with Stiefel, helped put together a request for proposals that were sent out to local and regional banks in order to set up bids on the purchase of these temporary notes for approximately $5.5 million. Based on that, they received backed three bids. And based on those bids, the bid of Western State Bank was the best bid for the purchase of the notes, and that was determined on the basis of the lowest interest rate that was bid. Also, if you have questions about kind of the process or the other bids that may have been received, I'll more than be happy to turn that over to Stan and kind of let him talk about the financial side if you have questions of those, of that nature. But based on that bid from Western State Bank, it was a interest rate of 4.05% and a final principal amount for the temporary notes of $5,540,000. And based on that bid, in that bid parameters, we went ahead and worked with them and revised the resolution of documents for you to actually authorize this resolution and the actual purchase agreement that would also be authorized by this resolution. Formally sell the temporary notes and that principal amount at that interest rates to Western State Bank. That closing is scheduled to occur on December 28th. That is not a date that the county will need to have a meeting or anything formal like this. This is your last formal action that you'll need to take for closing. But then on December 28th, my firm, working with Stan and Dave and Debbie Cox, will verify on that date that the county has actually received the purchase price for the notes. Once that has been verified, then we will alert Western State Bank that they will then, you know, be in possession of the notes. And that deal will be closed at that point. Once it has closed, and that is when that money is available to be used for the county's purposes. So once again, the two main projects in this note issue are the two economic development grants that the county agreed to underneath that incentive agreement. So those payments on those grants will need to be made prior to January 1st. And so that's why we staggered and made sure to have the closing of the temporary notes occur in advance of January 1st. We'll also work with J.D. as well as the county clerk in order to make sure then that all of the actions that are necessary for that money to actually be spent for those purposes is in place. So that once that money hits the bank, you will also know what to do in order then to spend that money in order to reach our obligations. So I'll work with, with administrative staff as well as the county clerk's office to make sure that all of those steps are in place also. As I mentioned though, all that's going to happen on the 28th, you will not even meet on that date. This resolution, if it's adopted, authorizes you to enter into the purchase agreement, which is a formal sale agreement between the county and the bank. And it also authorizes all the necessary actions to occur in order to have that successful closing on the 28th. So I'll stop at this point and see if there are any questions or any, any things that you'd like to discuss in more detail. And then, once we've had a chance to do that, I would request a motion second to approve the resolution as well as the purchase agreement.
And which resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-40 as presented.
I second it.
With a motion second, any further discussion on it?
Sure glad I didn't have to write up this contract.
It's a lot of paper.
I know, it's a lot.
Very thorough. I, you know, I think, you know, probably just a comment for the local banks, I'm really impressed with how they came back. I mean, you know, we had the three bidders and then one of the conversations today is interest rates and how they've been popping. And I think this is just a very strong presentation, obviously offered by a bank to say, hey, we, we want to support and be part of this process too and make sure it moves forward. It's a, it's a nice, nice interest rate, so anyway, just thought I'd put that out there. All right, with a motion to adopt resolution 2022-40 as presented, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, your motion passes.
Thank you all very much. You've given time. And Debbie, it's my understanding you have the signature pages all ready?
I've made several copies. Do you need them to do the purchase agreement?
Yes. And, and by adopting the resolution that authorizes the county to enter into the purchase agreement, you can go ahead and do a motion in second and discuss entering into that as well.
On the purchase agreement?
Yes. And that, that is a formal sale contract between the county and Western State Bank to formally sell the temporary notes to Western State Bank with the closing to occur on December 28th.
I make a motion to approve the purchase agreement as presented.
I second it.
All right, with a motion second, any further discussion on the purchase agreement? Seems pretty straightforward. I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Debbie, if you want, I can wait till after the meeting to pick those up and take back.
Yeah, because I'll have to go and sign and turn to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Garth.
Thank you all very much.
Stan?
Items three, four, and five are for county engineer John Otschel Ross, Kurt Michael.
Chris is going to go in first. Good afternoon, commissioners. First item is a topic we've been discussing for a few months now, related to the four lane expressway expansion project between Dodge City and Simberland, because we're only talking about the Ford County portion here. That KODA has requested the county, request might be a kind word, but has told the county they need to enter an agreement to pick up future maintenance of the access roads that are being constructed as part of this project to provide service to private entrances in some cases and over the county roads. So the agreement before you has been reviewed by myself. County Councilor Glenn Curves has provided comments to KODA a couple of times. They've made revisions to our satisfaction as far as the locations are all accurate and the verbiage is acceptable to the county for this agreement. So we now have this agreement. Before the commissioners, when the construction project is completed, which is anticipated to be like in the spring of 2025, then the county would take over maintenance of those access roads. And they will, they're all going to be asphalt paved roads.
John, if I remember right, these are going to be a lot thicker than what we currently do for the county. I don't remember if we do four inches, seven, or?
They're seven. I'm trying to remember. I don't know that they had any kind of subbase treatment on them. It's just dirt, though.
Okay.
I could be wrong about that. I don't remember if there's any subgrade treatment or not. There's not base material, it'd be maybe a treated subgrade.
Okay.
But they're putting bigger asphalt down in a good faith effort to get the county product that they shouldn't have to do a lot of mazes on for a number of years.
Right.
They're, for the most part, they're pretty light traffic, lightly traveled roads.
I was just going to ask, we're not looking at something that's supposed to have heavy traffic on it anyway, right?
No, I mean, there might be some farm equipment.
Residential vehicles.
Yeah, like horses and cattle trucks coming into some bins or to a farm field type thing.
Major maintenance will be snow removal.
Yeah, that'd be the biggest one. So the, the state has purchased the right of way for these, where these roads are going to go, and then they will need that right of way over the county as well.
Have you guys been able to drive the access roads just to make sure the flow and everything feels right? And that it's basically up to what we would consider safety standards, not just KODA's, but kind of what we do in the county?
I've not actually driven them myself since they.
I don't think they even have them open enough to.
You haven't been out?
I haven't been out that way for a while. I know they're working on them, I don't know if they're open or we can even drive on to them.
There's still some temporary, most of them are still some temporary roads. I've been on almost all of them.
They're pretty decent.
Yeah, they are. I went to Guard City several times over there to, to the dents and such as this. I'm going to tell you one thing about it. I wouldn't want to drive one right now. Looks like me, my accident, one of them construction companies might run over them.
There's a lot of activity out there right now.
Terribly loud. I mean, they're, they're working there in a while.
Yeah, that's right. A lot of dirt removal and asphalt, but.
That's true.
I believe the access roads are, for the most part, paved out. That was one of the first objectives, to get those paved.
Right.
And they'll be working on the main highway for the new, for the new westbound range on the north side. I think one of the guys that I was expecting said they'll probably pave this weekend and shut down for the winter for asphalt paving.
Okay.
So you may not see much more activity for paving until maybe like February. Typically starts to warm up, get a little longer daylight hours. And then they'll be hot and heavy again after that. A lot of work to be done. And I said there won't be any activity out there, but just asphalt paving.
John, did you go to the meetings that were in Engles and?
I, yes, I did.
Right, KODA S vote?
We were, we were one of the design consultants on the spot this year. I'm going west of Simberland in the Vinnie County, and the four lane expansions are under design.
I just can't get over the fact that they're wanting to spend that kind of money for that little stretch when you basically get to the airport and it's wide open. I mean, it's, it's, it's interesting to see that they're going to make a four lane all the way. I mean, I was really hoping that, I don't know, we almost beat a dead horse here, but was really hoping that they would land somewhere near Buckland and Spurville and Wright and give us better passing lanes in those areas versus spending all that money where they were.
As I mentioned before, KODA does have some passing lane projects in the works. They're on Highway 50 going east. They're scheduled for February, mid-lettuce now.
Okay.
For 2023 construction. So there are some, some projects going there.
Hopeful on those, or?
How far along are they?
No, are you hopeful that we'll get something in that area?
Oh, yeah.
From discussions?
Yeah. I mean, they're, they're scheduled to bid, so the, the design is.
Okay.
This is basically, I think the holdup was, they were supposed to bid in December originally. I think the utilities got behind a little bit, so they pushed them out a couple of months.
Okay.
But the plans are completed at this point and they're just finished up utilities. You can drive out to the east here with the right of ways from state. The farmer plan is re around it because it's going to get hacked up in the spring anyway.
Got you.
Sorry to hear where it fell.
Okay.
But it looks like they're a go.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the agreement between the Kansas Department of Transportation and Ford County.
I second it.
All right, with a motion second, any discussion on the topic? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next topic, Ford County engineer, 113 Road resurfacing contract.
Yeah, so when I was here last month, we had open bids to resurface 113 Road, which some people might remember as the old landfill road for the one mile between Comanche and Highway 50. Kind of the northern mile there. At that time, we had to receive two bids, so it was actually two parts of the bids. One is to resurface that one mile road, and then there was an add alternate to also do a mill and inlay on the jewel road portion going through the town of Wright there, just east of Highway 50. We took, we had two bidders, APAC of Kansas and Cost Construction. APAC had the little bid on both the base bid, which is the 113 Road, one mile, as well as the add alternate. The base bid for 113 Road was $1,901,824.85. The add alternate for the one, not quite a mile, I guess, Jewel to over Jewel Road, about a half mile, I think, something like that. That was $269,194. When I presented those bids initially, then the commissioners had asked if I could come up with an estimate to do 113 Road with concrete since it's going to be full depth pavement replacement. So what I did is I looked at, basically just, I looked at the project as a whole because everything else would stay the same. It's just really the pavement and the base treatment would change from asphalt to, to concrete pavement. Going with a concrete pavement surface with a crushed stone base, I came up with an estimate of $2,682,159,000. That was compared to my asphalt estimate, it was $2,273,563. $273,563. Those are estimates, those aren't contractor bids, that's, I mean, that's really what matters. But based on the estimates using pricing that I have available, the concrete, if we're to go with concrete, it would be approximately $400,000 additional cost. Now, some things that are hard to measure in that is historically, concrete is more expensive to build, but it's less maintenance over time, in the long, long term down the road. So depending on the actual costs that occurred, concrete oftentimes ends up winning maybe like 30 years down the road in the total cost of maintenance and everything. So you have to balance sometimes, how much money does the owner have available today to build a project versus how much they want to try to save through maintenance over a prolonged period of time? So head to head, I was estimating concrete would cost about $400,000 more for the state, one mile stretch. Over 30 years, the cost would probably even out, balance out because of different maintenance actions. Asphalt requires more frequent maintenance. After 10 years, you're going to have to start with chip seal, maybe crack seals, concrete, you don't do that kind of thing. It's built more rigid, so it's going to hold up better to temperature fluctuations and, and traffic loading. So there's less overall or frequent maintenance actions involved. I did get from the city, I know Iron Road has been brought up that's under construction currently north of Dodge City. I got the city's bid tabs, they're using a little bit different pavement section than what we would use on this road from what we got from our ZIO tag. And I looked at the bid price that Dodge City got for the concrete on that project, which was from early this year, I believe. So inflation is still occurring, kind of accounting. Keeping that in mind, even if I use the city's, what the city got for bid price from their contractor, concrete up front would still be more than the asphalt option on 113 Road. Not quite as much for, the city's using a little bit thinner section than we probably would on 113 Road. So that's, from my estimation, that's the cost comparison, is that concrete up front would be basically about $400,000 more than the asphalt option. I don't think they have any questions about the concrete discussion before we move on to whether we want to award a bid or not.
Are we moving forward on the very north part of that road, which is still the two lanes? Or do we look at doing a four lane? Because that would require probably design work, right?
Yes. So this bid is just to replace the pavement that is the footprint that is there. So it's four lanes, we're approximately half the way.
Yep.
And then the transition to two lanes, about midway north to Highway 50.
Okay.
Not to say that it couldn't be made a four lane. But I know there's some, some utilities in the road there that we didn't analyze. If they would be, you know, if we widen the road out both, on both sides. They, predominantly, there's that gas, it's a underground gas installation on the west side.
Yes.
It's clear back from the left, so if we build it, it would be an issue.
Sure.
And of course, we need to talk with KODA as far as widening the road right through Highway 50 as well. So that sort of could be done to make it a four lane, if that was a part of this bid package.
Right.
So if that is the desire, obviously there's cost implication on the construction side of that as well. Probably increase the bid to 25% or something like that.
And if we did do that, I'd like to see that intersection at the highway design to be for northbound traffic, to actually have a left turn lane, a lane to go straight up 113, and a right turn lane, and then have the two lanes for southbound traffic.
It's a busier intersection. It's busy.
So funding available, we have, I have $1.4 million available still in our construction contracts, line item for 2022. What we were thinking, if we did award a bid off this, off these APAC's bid, that we would encumber that $1.4 million this year and then use an additional, what a, additional out of the $1.4 million that I have for 2023, out of that line item, because the first bills wouldn't come in until work starts in the spring or summer of 2023 anyway.
Chris, how many concrete roads do we currently have in the county?
Zero.
Okay.
112 and Outlaw will be the first ones.
That's the one. Unless we, KODA's bidding it.
Yeah.
On behalf of the county. Thanks, Lee.
Yeah. How many times have we redone that little stretch of road? No, I guess not just Comanche north, but even maybe all the way west north. It's been addressed quite a few times.
The first time the county, the county built the four lanes. Originally, it was four lane, just like the north half is, where it's only half a mile of it. So it was only four lane down half a mile south of Comanche. And then the county used five years' worth of their federal funds to four lane it all the way down to Wyatt Earp.
Okay.
The state doesn't allow you to do that anymore. It was, pretty much took out a loan for five years. So now, we just go through the federal fund exchange with the state, and we get that money, and we, we put it into the special highway fund. That's only been going on for a few years, so that, that fund's not built up very much right now. So that's been redone there. We've overlaid it ourselves here just a couple of years ago because of the, the condition where the, the potholes that were in it. And it's, it's held up with that overlay. At the time that, the, when the state, when the contract come in and redid the four lane all down to Wyatt Earp, we. At the time that, when the state, when the contract come in and redid the four lane all down to Wyatt Earp, we, we overlaid the north half of one thirteen road at the same time then. And then, so we also did it here just a couple of years ago, where we did the north half as well then too. So just in the last ten years, it's had a couple overlays on it, so, and then the seal jobs on top of that. So within, I'd say, the last fifteen years, we've, there've been three, three, one major job with the county putting the four lanes, and then the two overlays, plus the south half getting the complete rework for the four lane.
And this project was set up, just as a refresher, that the existing asphalt would get stripped off, we would recondition the underlying soil, put down a geosynthetic mat, it's called GeoGrid, it's kind of a checkerboard looking matting for a support layer, and then put crushstone down, and put six inches of pot mix asphalt on top of that, so it's going to be a pretty substantial, easy layer. It was designed for thirty years, based on the traffic estimated volumes that we have.
Okay.
With anticipated growth.
That's the one that was bigger than the one point nine?
Correct.
So the savings with concrete would be, maintenance wise, we would not have to seal, we would not have to seal it. The main maintenance would be just restriping it and keeping, keeping the stripes once they fade, just repainting them.
Yeah.
What do we save per mile without having that cost?
Seal, seals are about twenty-five thousand per mile. Twenty-five to thirty probably now, I haven't ran the numbers all this year.
Per lane?
Per, per, per mile, so both lanes.
Okay.
Per mile.
Two, two lanes of, per mile?
Yes. Two lane miles for thirty thousand dollars. So.
So that would be maybe forty-five thousand?
Thirty-year period, you would probably, you would seal it five times.
And you'd put it down at some point, too, to give it some additional structure.
And you're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars for an overlay, for two lane miles.
So overlays, you're getting upwards of?
You would, we'd do an overlay probably once every ten years, so you're looking at two overlays in a thirty, well, because if you did a pot mix, let that go for ten years, and then you're probably doing, you'd do a seal job, and then do another seal job. So you'd probably have two overlays in that thirty-year period. Three at the most.
All right, so chip and seals, you're talking about?
Five hundred and seventy thousand.
Two overlays?
Two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars.
Probably two overlay, you'd chip seal a time or two before you needed overlay. So you could probably get about just a couple overlays in the thirty years.
So now we're pushing four hundred thousand?
Yeah, I should say that probably we even out after thirty years. All dependent on pricing, which has inflated this place.
Problem is, is, yeah, you're using, you're using today's pricing to figure out
Right.
what all your overlays and your, and your chip and seals are.
Yeah, so essentially, they'd end up being the same price after thirty years.
What was the one nine that you talked about, one point nine million?
That's what our bid is to do.
Yeah.
The job that we have bid out here right now.
And there's an add alternate in Wright, to do an overlay for another two hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Seventy thousand now.
So if we do concrete, we're not accepting that, because we're not even concrete over there, right?
Oh, no, so that's just, that's just doing an overlay on top of what's over there.
We would have to go out for a different bid, redo the bid just for, for the section of Jewel Road.
Yes.
Okay.
And if, if we did choose, or if you, if the commission did choose to go with ass, or concrete, excuse me, I would like to see what it would cost to do the four lane all the way up to one thirteen road, that, or to Highway fifty, because that was the original plan, when the money was spent, the state money was spent to go down to Wyatt Earp. The original plan was to then turn around and do the same thing, go north, but the state changed their rules on that money, so we're not able to do that.
Okay.
I'd tell you for sure, if you drive out there very many times, you'll think that there should be a four lane on there. I mean, it doesn't take a while to understand that.
I drive that every day.
I'm almost leaning towards putting a bid package out and doing the concrete, my, my hangout on it is, we're only getting half a lane though. You know?
Right.
If we did it, we really get, we're only doing halfway.
Yep.
We're talking about, you know.
Yeah, one mile of the two.
Two point seven million, and we're, and we're only getting halfway done with the job. But I doubt it's ever going to be cheaper than it is right now.
Depends on what the economy has in the year two.
And I'd, I'd say you could look at it as actually more of a four lane expansion all the way up, and we're just doing it with concrete this time. And then in the future, we would go back and reconcrete, or do concrete on the south half.
Yeah, it's not hard to phase it that way necessarily, but it'd be nice to do it all at once, if the money was there, obviously.
You've got bondsmen in the road for you to go.
They're still here.
Yeah, what? No, that's the money. I would even put out there, since we've already got plans for asphalt, if the county wanted to. We already surveyed it, we've got a basic design done, we'd have to modify it for concrete, because since we make a second set of plans and bid for both. Here's an asphalt set of plans, here's a concrete set, let's go head to head and see how it comes out.
I'm thinking that we, we really need to do, we need to have, whenever we say, no, we're not going to do this right now, we'd like to see what this bid comes back, concrete. We really still need to have, I think, the option with a bid, again, the way that it's bid right now. Because if we get to that point, and the concrete comes back, and we go, oh, we can't do that, there's no way we can do that, we, then we're backed up again on timeframe, and, and we don't have the other option before us anymore.
And the other thing to just, to weigh, and there's no guarantees to know how anything's going to go, it's very rare when you redid a highway job, that it comes back cheaper, no matter what you're bidding. So there's, knowing the market the way it is, the shortage is in materials and labors and all that, there's a good chance your asphalt bid could go up too, if you redid it. It doesn't mean the concrete would be, and that's a tough decision, when you're talking about lifecycle cost. Is the county only able to accept a low bid, if they're head to head? Or does, do you have the flexibility to say, if it's within so many percentages, we'd take concrete over asphalt? I don't know how the county procurement policy works on that. I hear you saying, obviously, if you go thirty years out, the cost is about the same, if you figure maintenance, but if you're looking at two bids side by side, which one is the county? Do you have the flexibility to pick the one you want, or do you have to go with the one that costs less on paper today?
We've run up against this before, I think we have the flexibility to use the one that we, seems to be in the best interest of the.
Yeah, just want to make sure we all know that, before we go through any exercises and spend money on something that wouldn't work out, I mean, something like that would be possible to have that flexibility.
Chris, what's your budget for next year look like? What are you, what are you projecting on the roads, just in general?
So same budget, safe flat, same as this year. If we did, if we did this, we would encumber that one point four out of this year, and we would have to use six hundred thou, if we choose, if we chose both the base and the add alternate, we'd have to use seven hundred thousand. So that would leave me with another, eight, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand, just in the, for the road work. So that eight hundred thousand is additional to all of our regular seal and overlay maintenance. That was the money we put in there a couple of years ago to start doing this type of work. Eight hundred thousand wouldn't allow us to go over and start doing anything like one oh two road or anything like that. I don't even know if one point four would allow us to go over, and based off this price, I don't think we'd be able to start going over and doing anything on one oh two either.
Yeah. And what's, what are we thinking on this road? It has to be done next five years? This next year has to be done?
Well, the, the thinking that John and I had is, when the prices come in, we didn't have the money in the budget to do all three miles of one oh two road. So to try to keep moving along, we jumped to the next one in line, which was one thirteen road. So that's, that was the thinking on that, it was just, it was the next in line. The overlay we did on it is starting to show the sinking back in, the, just like we had on Jewel Road.
It kept it over for basically the summer, but it's starting to get beat up again a little bit.
And what's our next opportunity for cost sharing deal there with?
Spring.
Spring, yeah.
So the applications are duly due like in April. K D O said they anticipated more funding in the spring round. They would not say the applications are due in April, they would probably announce the selections in maybe late May, early June. And then if the county were selected, you would know at that point if you had the additional money, K D O, to help with the project.
Would this project qualify, and does it get moved up the list for, for having money already dedicated to it?
K D O is duly looking for projects that the entity can't afford to do on their own. And that's, that's why we started applying one oh two road for the cost share, because county has the money currently for one thirteen, at least the one mile. But they don't have enough money for one oh two road, so that's what we're trying to explain to the K D O. In the application is that the county does need assistance to get one oh two road done. We're also trying to play up the fact that there's construction occurring on Highway fifty, which includes relining the south end of one oh two road there, or right on the north side of Highway fifty, and we'd like to take advantage of having the contractor there on site, to see if we can, one, if we use the crushstone base like we showed on one thirteen road, Highway fifty's got a ton of concrete pavement over here, that's going to get torn out, and be available for crushing and using on one oh two road, and it's just right there. So you're not going to get any cheaper base material than that, it's already ready to run aside. And then the cost is doing that project, and it's an asphalt paving project, so they're already working right there by one oh two road, next two years.
Okay.
And we had not been doing cost share application on one thirteen, correct? Because I'm just, I'm just thinking here, if we did a, if we put an application in for one thirteen road to four lane it all the way to Highway fifty, and include also changing the south half to concrete too, if that would be a compelling application for K D O.
I'm sure it would open our eyes a little bit. I know that to do both miles would be way more money than K D O's going to be able to do in one application, but so this would be, you got a K D O cost share might pay for, you know, up to half of one mile, either the north mile, the south mile, and the other mile would be all on the county, if you did it all on project.
Well, gentlemen, lots of thoughts here. Budget considerations, we're walking on.
Well, I know which way I'd like to go, I just don't see the budget numbers working out for that.
I think, if you're talking concrete, that's exactly what my thought was, I mean, I was really hoping that, I mean, it's within twenty percent, but it's still pretty far outside the scope of the one point four million on budget. It'd be really nice to have that stretch done, because it is, it's basically our driveway too. I mean, that's, that's what we drive.
Yeah.
I mean, safety of all vehicles there. Which is why I want to go for it, but.
I tell my wife all the time, I guess if we don't have the money, we can't do it. End of story.
Makes a difference.
What I'd like to see is four, four lane all the way to the concrete, because I'd like to see, but I'm way too old, you can't get her out.
You don't want, go ahead, who had that bid?
APAC was a little better, yes, on this project, on the asphalt.
How far apart were they?
Sure. Two hundred and
Okay.
Yeah, two hundred thousand, two hundred and sixty thousand, on the base bid.
You know, Chris, when I keep thinking about this road, I keep thinking that, you know, it, we may not overseal the whole thing, all, I mean, all the time. It seems like we're always patching that thing, I mean, constantly just taking like a, I don't know, maybe a twenty-foot stretch and just tearing it up and redoing it. And I guess that's what I was trying to get away from with asphalt, is maybe if that's our, such a heavily trafficked road, we could save some by doing this concrete and looking at, saying, hey, this is, this is a primary spot for us to come in with, maybe our second county concrete route. But it's such a heavy truck, truck traffic. And we've, we've done study after study with equipment, I mean, for speed and traffic counts, and it's just amazing there. I don't know. I mean, in my mind, I'm really wishing we could get some way to get to that concrete phase, but I would love to have that be a four lane all the way. I mean, we're just missing that step of the engineering that the K D O put inside as well. I don't know how much work goes into that, I don't, I don't know if that's a ton of hours and meetings, or?
No, if, if we're just talking four lane by itself, I know Chris mentioned the idea of making a five lane at the intersection, that would be more work.
Right.
Where we have dedicated turn lanes for northbound, getting onto the highway. Because we're talking widening the footprint even more than what's to the south. Just going to a four lane, as far as dealing with K D O, I don't think that would be much of an issue really. It'd be, for developing the construction plans and then submitting it to them as a highway permit. Since the county's paying for it, I don't know that they would argue with not doing it necessarily.
Right, right.
And there wouldn't be any right of acquisition, the right of ways letting Wyatt Earp all the way up to the highway?
There's a lot of accidents there, is there a lot of?
Yeah.
Yeah? How long would that take? To look at a four lane it for the last, like the study side of it?
It would probably take us, to actually put together the construction plans, probably a couple of months, I would say.
It's kind of torn here, gentlemen.
I'd say another thing to think about is where K D O's looking into the study of the four lane from Avenue three all the way out to Highway thirty, figuring out how that would affect, you know, if we did a project, and we did that whole intersection right there, and if they come in, and I don't know if they would go north with the four lane, or if they would come south into where we've already put the intersection at. But if they did that, they would have pretty much paid a
Most likely north, they've already got extra right of way to the north in that corridor. And that project's going to be probably four to five years down the road, at least, before they go to construction, if not more.
What was your number again?
Four to five years.
Four to five, okay.
I thought you said forty-five.
I did too, I was so close, I was like, did he just say forty-five years? Wow.
I'm here to say.
Well, I'm just kidding. Maybe up to five years or more.
Yeah.
I was trying to rephrase that. Spin it out.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve Apex's bid of one point nine mil for the one thirteen road. Is that right?
Yeah.
That's not exact, I'm sorry.
It's not exact. One million, nine hundred and one thousand, eight twenty-four point eighty-five.
And the add alt for?
The add alt in it is two sixty-nine thousand, one ninety-four point zero zero. And that's Jewel Road portion. Do you need a grand total of that?
Sure.
The, the grand total would be two million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, zero, zero one eight point eighty-five.
Okay. So my motion is to approve the bid by Apex for the overlay or for the, sorry, not overlay.
Resurfacing of one thirteen road.
One thirteen road and the add alt for the portion of Jewel Road in Wright, Kansas. For a total of two million, one hundred seventy-one thousand and eighteen dollars and eighty-five cents.
So we have a motion in these seconds.
I'm not going to second that.
Okay. All right, so the motion dies. Mr. Snutt, is there something you'd like to see on this project?
Something I'd like to see on this project?
Yeah, is there a motion or something you'd like to see or suggestion you put in front of this?
Well, how long does this, it would take to do this project?
I would guess about four months.
Four months.
That the road will be closed.
So that means if you, all them trucks move clear down there, go by the old high things, turn and go all the way through there. On that, I talk with the city, city and county. Is that what we're talking about?
Uh, I would recommend that we detour them down Avenue B, I think.
No, I'm, I'm asking you, what are you going to do? Stand out there and stop them?
We would, we would put signs up saying road closed ahead and they would have to, you know, detour around on US fifty around out by the airport.
Well, there's a lot of trucks go down and out.
And that's what the county did, granted for a lot shorter duration, but when they overlaid it, they closed the road for safety precautions. This would be for a longer duration. People don't follow it, but it's a jail right there.
I've been in jail all year long. I know about that. I can tell you, this is not really jail, but I've been nursing home, nursing home, hospital, and hospital, and my house.
I hear you.
Well, I've been in jail. I know about that. But. So why don't you second?
Well, I, I really think we should probably put a study together to actually look at getting it done with concrete. And if KDOT's going to be walking down the north bypass right there, I, I would like to see it all come together as one. I mean, if we, if we've got a little bit of time ahead of us, let's just kind of bank this money that we currently have and roll it and come back in with a four lane all the way that's concrete. I mean, I, I'd really like to see this done right. And I think, I think, I mean, we have a good team. I mean, I, I think that we can talk this through and work this through and come up with a good budget for it. And I mean, if, if it is a safety concern or there's other issues there, I mean, this, this is a, this is a big part of what we do and, I don't know, like, I, I just think of that, when I think of that road, I think it's a county road. I really just think that's ours. You know, that's, that's our driveway. It comes right into our daily operations with everybody. So I just don't want to see it patched. You know, I just don't, I really just want to see it, just a dang good road for a long time, especially right there. So I guess that's why I'm, I wasn't the second. I'm, I'm really just looking to see if this part of the project can just really, I don't know. I mean, I, I think material costs, I don't see that coming down a lot. I mean, I think we're, we're probably just hanging where we're at. If not, it might creep up a little bit more, but.
At least it pays at five plus a gallon, it's not going to come down very fast.
Yeah, I did see it below five today at one, one gas station.
Wouldn't hope.
Yeah, there's a doorway, very low. But that's, I, I guess that's where I'm at. So I don't know, I guess from my standpoint, this wouldn't be a motion at all. It would just be let the bids die and come back with a plan to put in place to say, hey, let's, let's get this as a four lane all the way and try and tie it in with, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you would make a motion not to accept the bids.
Gotcha. I'd make a motion not to accept the bids.
I second.
Before our clarification on admin side, would you like us to work with the county engineer to get a plan for four lane? Like we were talking, like you guys were talking about earlier in the discussion, four lane for asphalt, four lane for concrete? Or do you just want us to focus on concrete?
I think you need to do both.
Okay.
I think you've got most of that part done already.
Yeah, asphalt done.
Yeah.
We don't have to change anything. We're doing the extra for that. It's, it's sort of there.
Maybe make it four lane the entire way up.
Right.
Okay. So you'd have that, that change there, but I, I really think you keep both the options there.
Yeah.
In case you have horrible sticker shock over.
Well, exactly, exactly. Yeah.
Uh, you'd have another option for getting it done.
Yeah.
But I, I, I like the idea of, of backing off of the urgency of the thing until we see what state's going to do with, with the north bypass up there. That's, I think that's a good thought process.
To, to further that thought too, we, we had another piece in there, the Jewel Road, right?
Correct. That's overlay.
So, I mean, we have a motion second at this point, so we're discussing it. What, what would you guys like to do with the Jewel Road side of it? I mean, go back out for bid just on that part?
I think that was bid as an add alt, but we can't accept that, right?
Yeah, you can't accept it.
We'd have to, we'd have to send out a different bid package just for that. And it would probably be, it would be more than just that, that alternate.
Right. I was about to say, do you think it's wise that we wait until this project comes back in the future? Or is it something we're going to just do?
I might ask Chris his opinion on the performance of the roads there.
It's really rough over there right now. I'd like to get it fixed and be, and keep it, get it more uniform with the rest of Jewel Road. Budget wise, I mean, I would have the budget, if we looked at this next year's budget, I'd have the budget just to have that. If we rebid just that section and did that as a different project, I would have the money for that easily. But I, I agree. I, I think if we're going to take a swing at one thirteen road, we take the big swing at it and get it done right the first time on, on that section of it.
And, and on the Jewel, it's not, it doesn't actually include the Jewel place, does it? Which is the little offshoot.
Angle Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, no. The, the, we, we were only discussing going from the railroad track to two one eighteen.
Okay. Okay.
It's not, not even a quarter mile, is it?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, I think it's, I think it's over a quarter mile, it's less than a half a mile.
Would there be a desire to throw that in there? Is that possible here either?
Yeah, and I, and I, my thought is if the state's going to go through, and they're putting a passing lane somewhere near that, can we piggyback off that and actually do Jewel Road at that same time? But if it's urgent, that's a different deal.
Well, I could, I could see, well, that would, that would make it a full mile if we did the angle road, maybe even more than a mile. So that might up the cost to where, where we're at with this cost of the one point nine. I don't know if he would do the same engineering. You know, that's, that's, that's a mile and a half lane wise, you know.
Are you talking just an overlay or actually full depth in that angle road?
Well, well, if you did the angle road, just, I think just the overlay, I don't think we could get that on that then.
So you're talking three or four hundred thousand dollars, something like that?
It's, and I haven't been across that far.
It's, it's not as bad as Jewel Road in through Wright, but if, if we're right there, I mean, I don't think it would hurt to go ahead and just do it. Cause it, it gets the, the traffic that comes down Jewel Road and out of Wright, all the grain, uh, grain truck traffic. And then they come over to one seventeen to go down, especially from Elias.
Right.
Grain, and then they go down to their elevator at Will Roads and they use the angle road.
Okay.
And the elevator also uses, they use it quite a bit because they stockpile grain there on the south side.
All right, so we had a motion in the second, and we're still discussing Jewel Road part of this. Is that something that can come back to us as a bid? Is that something?
Yeah, it would have to come back. It's to be separated out and if we would have angle road in there, we could modify our bid package and include that as well.
I think that means doing the portion through Wright and doing add alt on the.
Yeah.
Do that. We have to re-advertise it and take bids and come back.
Okay.
So that, that one point, yeah, the one point four million I have this year, we just let it set in the budget.
Right.
And then use next year's to do that.
Bank it.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion on this one?
I think we've left enough air into that.
Do we have? Put a line. All right. With the motion second, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just.
Aye. I thought you were voting on Kill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kill them.
I didn't understand. I guess I'm not hearing.
Yes. Okay.
Sorry, John, take another swing.
I can do that. Now, the county's here for the, yes, sir. The minister recorded. You said it was going to be a short meeting. Can I hear that?
Guilty. Guilty, guilty.
You should never say that. Well, this is the monthly update for county engineering activities. Just a quick update on the Highway fifty project west of town, as I've covered a little bit. Uh, the dirtwork continues to move along. Installation of pipe culverts and the concrete box structures are moving forward. I think Ford County, they're about half done with the box culverts right now. We've got quite a bit more to do yet as the winter rolls along. Good, good winter work. You can do that work in the, in the cold all day long. That's no problem. Uh, the access roads, like I said, have at least one lift of asphalt. I believe they all pretty much are, are fully surfaced according to what my inspector out there told me. The contractor's placed asphalt on main line for, I don't have an exact percentage. I didn't get that up date in time. Uh, but for a good portion of the Ford County job towards the west end. Have you seen there at the pointer rocks where they're building that retaining wall? It's quite a, quite a project, quite an undertaking they've got going there. And I believe all the underground piling that will support that wall are in place. If you've seen, they've installed steel ivies and they're putting wood timbers in between them.
I didn't understand, are you driving up there? Is that, are you passing that?
Uh, no, that's, that's not where the traffic's going to be. That's really just more for looks. I mean, the retaining wall's not for looks. I think the wood timbers are for looks. Uh, the retaining wall is to withhold the rock back, but the driving lanes will be down, down below.
Okay.
And once the wall is complete, I anticipate they'll excavate into that rock a little bit further.
I got you.
For the roadway. Now, in that area, it is going to be, it's not a divided four lane yet. It's going to be four lanes side by side, just like it is when you first leave down the city. Uh, once it gets west of the pointer rocks, that's where the highway will be blocked out. The reason KDOT did that is to minimize the footprint, minimize the impact of the pointer rocks. Also is a reason for the retaining wall that's up there. Quite an undertaking.
Yeah.
Sure, there's a couple of dollars standing on that wall, looks like. Uh, the mall, the wall's moving forward and it sounded like it is probably better than seventy-five percent complete at this point. Uh, as I mentioned briefly earlier, on the, the one twelve and Outlaw Road improvements for the Hellmark Cheese Plant, KDOT is currently advertising that paving project to bid. Bids will be open next Wednesday, December fourteenth by KDOT. And usually that same day, they will post the bids on the KDOT website, if not that day, probably the day after on the fifteenth. So we should know before the next commission meeting what our bids look like. Uh, the lower crossing project on one twenty-seven road between Kettle and Marshall, we do have all of the permits needed for construction of that project. Uh, we are holding off bidding it for installation until we can bid it concurrently with Off System Bridge ninety-seven, as we discussed in the previous meeting. However, road and bridge did move forward with purchasing, I don't know if you want to call it pre-purchasing, the railroad half tankers that are needed for the project. So that we can secure those in place and make sure that they are available. So those have been purchased through the railroad yard and they are currently under fabrication. They'll be waiting when we, when we have a contract in lineup for installation.
When do we anticipate being able to bid?
Uh, we're shooting for March. Still shooting for March.
March.
With Off System Bridge ninety-seven. It's going to be a little bit, so that's the next item on my, on my list here is Off System Bridge ninety-seven. Uh, we, we went out to, to solicit geotechnical proposals for doing the subsurface exploration and foundation design of that span bridge. Uh, we got one proposal from GSI to do that work and, and just got that approved and so that we'll be getting them started. It'll probably take them a couple of months to get that work completed. And so if we get their information back in January, that'll leave us a fairly short turnaround to get bids in March. So we'll see, you know, if we stretch it in April a little bit or something like that, but we're, we're still gunning for March to get both those projects bid out, so we can get them lined up and ready to go. Uh, Jewel Road reclamation, which was done last year, still working with Apex to get a response. And we'll try to put a little more pressure on them to get something back with us so we can get to something in agreement of how we're going to move forward with that project. Uh, the one twenty-three road timber culvert replacement, road and bridge, and the cost of culverts. Anything that's metal has gone up astronomically. The costs required to solicit bids. I think Chris just said you're accepting bids next week, is that right?
Correct.
For the culverts. Uh, so we'll get a, we'll get bids next week and we can purchase a culvert and get that project going here this winter to replace that timber span structure. Just get down to the active things here. I'd help the county apply for local bridge improvement funds with KDOT towards the replacement of Off System Bridges fifty and Off System Bridge one twenty, or excuse me, one oh one. KDOT has not announced selected projects for funding yet, but I did talk with local projects last week. And they were optimistic that they would get those announced this month, hopefully next two weeks. So they're coordinating with the governor. The governor wanted to do a formal announce, a press release announcement. They get all that lined up, we'll have a formal announcement. Anticipating, we'll hear something this month. So along with those two bridges, the county had approved a contract with Kirk and Michael to do the survey design. We have got the field survey work completed now. Uh, so we'll be in a position to start the preliminary design. Especially if one or both of those are awarded funds from KDOT, you can get the ball rolling. Uh, no work has been completed on the biennial routine bridge inspections. They are not actually due until February, so no work will occur until February. Federal highway is very particular about not getting too far in advance of the due date and definitely not getting behind the due date. Try to hit the due dates pretty much on the money we can. Quick couple of updates. Add it to my notes here, the KDOT railroad, or should say the highway, the railroad crossing Highway four hundred, it's not a KDOT railroad crossing. East of Dodge City near Carnegill, I did send a request to KDOT to investigate the need for improved lighting or signalization on those, on the existing signals. And they have passed that on to their coordinating section for investigation. And I did speak with KDOT about the accidents that occurred at the intersection of Highway Fifty and West White Earp, as we're coming south of the casino when the highway comes up to West White Earp there. Sent an email to the district engineer, and he passed it on to the KDOT safety group, and they, I got an email acknowledgement of their receipt, they'll come out, look at that in intersection, to see if it maybe needs additional street lighting or signage to improve safety there, based on accident history. Final thing that I had was the pavement maintenance study that Road and Bridge is working with KEC, local road engineer on, reviewed the draft report, that was presented to Road and Bridge and provided a few comments, and we're expecting the final report by the end of the year. So that comes around, we'll present it to the commissioner in January, whatever. That concludes my report for today. Any questions? Nobody exhausted by now?
Right.
Talked out, okay.
Always a good part of the meeting. Lots of thoughts go through our mind at this point.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Always will do that. Appreciate it, sir. Merry Christmas to you all.
Next item is for Chris O'Leo for the Road and Bridge Purchase Agreements.
Okay, I have for the one twelve and outlaw Gilmar Road projects, I have two purchase agreements for right of way, one with Cargill and one for Carol Franz Trust for the division's You may not have Carol Franz Trust in fact, that email, that came in today, I have a copy of it.
They have it.
You have, they do have it? Okay. Yep, that's here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we approve the purchase agreements between Ford County and the sellers as presented.
All right, so with a motion and a second, is made to approve the purchase agreements between Ford County and the sellers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Next two items are for Communications Director Elliot Lee.
The first item I've got in front of you is a renewal for the Motorola software updated agreement and service agreement. Been through legal counsel, we've been working on this since December of last year, negotiating and getting it where it needs to be. So I think we've finally got to a point where, where I'm comfortable getting it in front of you guys, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the Motorola service contract as requested by the Communications Director.
I second it.
All right, with motion, seconds. Any further discussion on the topic? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Elliot.
Second item I've got in front of you is kind of in conjunction with this contract. One of the things we got smacked with was a twenty thousand dollar upgrade for software for the recorder, that we used to record nine oh one and radio traffic and things like that. We were able to work with FISTCOM, also since last year, to get them to restructure the way they do their agreements, so that's a covered piece of software now. So it's actually a two-year agreement that, over that two years, that, that cost will be rolled into, into that agreement. So no real increase or decrease or change, it just codifies that, yes, the software is our responsibility, and by us entering into a two-year agreement, we don't get stopped with an unexpected cost for that software. Because essentially, the Motorola system gets upgraded every two years.
Oh, okay.
All the computers, servers, switches, everything gets upgraded, so as things go outdated or become obsolete, they just replace them as part of the Motorola, part of it. This covers the recorder side of that.
I was, I was always curious on this one, what, what do you think is their restocking part of that contract? Where they do a thirty-five percent charge? I just thought it was interesting that it's software and...
So once they, if they get the software license from Motorola and we elect not to upgrade, then they have to negotiate with Motorola for the return of that license.
So it's on the license.
Yeah, so it's a really nasty process to try to get it back to them. So I'm assuming that that's what...
Yeah. Panel lease.
Yeah. Took, took me a year to negotiate these contracts.
Yeah, right, right.
I'm sure a return isn't, isn't much better.
No, and honestly, when you go into something like this, there is probably no intent to return, but it's interesting when you see a fee, like there's a shelf you put that on, I mean, it's not...
Yeah, there's, there's been some other agreements that we've been negotiating with Motorola and some interest in project management fees that I'm fairly comfortable no one would agree to.
Sure.
So we've been negotiating those out, and pretty successful so far.
Nice.
The previous contract dumps, the, the initial contract came back at between two hundred and seventy-five and three hundred thousand a year. Been working it pretty hard.
Yeah. Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the Eventide Recorder Service Contract.
I second it.
With motion, second, any further discussion on the contract? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Next item is for Sheriff Carr to specify the key man of the software cabinet purchase.
Hello, gentlemen.
How are you?
Good. So I think I misspoke when I had Amy send you some information earlier. I think I told her I was looking at one L touch system, which is the big one, and two of the M.
Yes.
I was sort of misspeak. So the M, I'm not interested in, it's one L and two of the S's.
Okay.
Just for clarification, not to bore you with details, we've had a group of individuals countywide, Chris, Tish, Rob, Elliot, myself, we've been looking at the key management systems for quite some time now, considering it actually for a few years. It's something I, we're lacking countywide for accountability, as you're all aware, we have, all of us have keys in our pockets, and we probably don't know what they go to, so, and in our desk drawers, and in my case, I had a closet full of boxes full of keys. A lot of money. So I've been trying to rectify that issue for quite some time. We've looked at other vendors. I guess the funny part about it, after looking at other vendors, just off the whim, I thought, well, I'll call Decker Electric, who we already have. You guys approved a security awareness system upgrade here a few years ago. That's what they sell. So, done all this other research to, full, come full circle back to the company we already have, so what I'm looking for is a purchase of these items to exceed the seventy-eight thousand dollars, which will take care of my office currently. I have funds available, so it shouldn't affect anything, and we can get the ball rolling countywide. Chris is looking at it for his office here in the near future. I think Elliot's got some needs, county attorney. The best part about it, as I said, we've already got their system, we own it, so it must basically be an enhancement to what we have, so we're adding on. Kind of excited.
What's, sure, when you're talking about like the small one, like what's the small one run for? Like what is...
I don't even remember. I didn't, I didn't bid it, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I didn't bid it.
Okay.
Like I said, it tracks, there's so many features to this, obviously, my concern is, is what really got me going here recently is I had to buy a single cylinder, key cylinder, five keys and a, a door latch, and over three thousand dollars, but the keys were like sixty dollars a piece. And after digging around, getting the box, it's like, guess what I found? Had some keys. So it, we've probably wasted some money over the years.
Sure.
Just because we don't know. I took a picture a while ago, just to kind of show you just an idea of what I'm dealing with. This is what I've got in boxes. This is what I'm saddled with, so we've just got rings and rings of keys. So this system will allow us to input them, track them, you can put descriptions on it, if somebody checks out a key, if it's worn, if it's broke, needs replaced, we'll know. We've got rings that certain people carry, we can limit access to who can pull out what keys, why not. Vehicles, spare vehicles, you know, somebody goes on sick leave, vacation or whatever, park their vehicle, we lock their keys up, so just the accountability side of this is barbed in, but most importantly, the J D is a big concern. So we've got, obviously, we have keys that just not everybody has access to.
Yeah.
So we can track it. If I need a barter, if J D wants, calls out and says, hey, you got a vehicle I can barter to take on a trip? Yep, I can schedule it, set his text or email. He forgets to come back by, drop the key off, that'll send him a message. Hey, turn the key in, so.
Wow. License sirens, too.
I know I'm like you guys, a little shell shocked on the pricing, but one of the other companies I looked at, just a single box was a hundred and twenty thousand.
Wow.
Yeah. It's just, it's the direction we're moving today.
But the idea behind this is you have a code system that you enter that opens the door for you to take that key and then, yeah.
If you even try to put it in, if you put it in the wrong peg, you bring a key back, you put it in the wrong peg, it won't light yet, it won't lock it. It'll literally flash another code color, and so it even tells you that you put it in the wrong spot.
Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the request to purchase key management software and cabinets.
I second it.
Not to exceed seventy-eight thousand dollars as presented by Sheriff.
I second it.
All right, with motion, second, any further discussion? Only thing I was gonna say is, Chris, if that's something that your department has a need for and we just didn't approve, or last one, if you've got some funds now that you were trying to bank, I mean, maybe this is a time that you should look at something like that as well, so. All right, gentlemen, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Debbie, do you want this one?
I really haven't had a chance to look at it, but I don't take it.
Okay. So item number ten is the Southwest Kansas Area Agency on Aging, the Subregion Council. One of the appointees, Sandra Herter, is moving out of the area, so we haven't had an opportunity to contact County Halt Field just yet, but if that's who you all want us to look at, that's who we'll look at, we'll bring it back.
I think on this one, you know, knowing that she hasn't been contacted to accept, is there a way to accept the resignation and then just go out for the person?
Yeah.
Maybe whoever's interested, I mean, maybe there's other people yet?
In the past, I've put in a page, and then had, we've gotten two or three people that way.
Okay, is there something we do on Facebook as well with the county side or?
I don't know, we put all the press releases.
Wherever they go.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we just accept her resignation, it will start that process?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to accept the resignation letter from Sandra Herter and thank her for her time and ask the county clerk to go out for interest.
I would second.
With motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I'm so loud, dude.
And it was loud, too.
Get to the point of the meeting.
That's right. Item number eleven is just the calendar, the holiday schedule for twenty twenty-three. Just need you all to, to review that and approve it.
Pretty much look the same as this year's?
They did add Juneteenth.
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three holiday schedule.
I second it.
Motion, seconds. Any further discussion on the topic?
Looks like me, you're gonna have to move the first two January meetings.
I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item, this one's for you and Debbie.
Gentlemen, we usually ask for a last day to pay the bills of the year. Or you could give us permission to pay the bills.
On that date, we normally have other business that happens too, correct?
Sometimes.
Yeah.
Depends on what you're, you're doing. You have, the nineteenth is your last regular scheduled meeting. We are closed the twenty-fifth, or twenty-sixth, I think.
So what day are you thinking?
That is strictly up to you. We can do the thirtieth or the twenty-ninth.
Look at that, get a cake, put it in on the thirtieth. Look at that, get a cake, we can make another 30th.
A cheeseburger cake.
Cheeseburger cake.
JD's birthday. Don't forget it.
I'm gone that day. Taking note.
I made it with the cheese.
And then we just made use of that.
You made the cheese on the birthday.
We like to keep the same, 3:30.
I think that works. Let's go with, I'd make a motion, we approve December 29th at 3:30 for the end of the year special board meeting.
I would second.
With the motion second, any further discussion on the date and time? Hearing none, a call of vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
I still think it's okay to bring snacks.
Mini cheeseburgers?
Sliders. 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 Whatever. It's gonna be a fun meeting, I'm telling you.
As Commissioner Smoot alluded to earlier, we do have scheduled changes for the first two meetings in January. First one, the first meeting lands on the New Year's holiday and the second one will land on Martin Luther King, New Year's Day. Just want to move like we generally do, just Tuesday to the next day.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve moving the meeting dates to the following Tuesday respectively to the regularly scheduled board meetings for January at the same times.
I'll second that. With motion second, any discussion on this one? Hearing none, a call of vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to discuss the upcoming meetings before the executive session.
Perfect.
So the upcoming meetings, the Dog City Streets Gate Project, where I'm very concerned with helping to set, that will be this Thursday, December 8th at 10:30 a.m. at the Quarter of Second Front, just north of the El Capitan statue, and of course, you all know that they've done that, that project, they have the road work going on now. I spoke to City Manager Hernandez about that time because we have our employee appreciation luncheon that begins at 11:00 Thursday, so they have agreed to start promptly at 10:30 to get the ceremony done, so we can, so we can attend at least the ones that are going to be at all times. The employee appreciation luncheon is December 8th from 11:00 to 2:00, and we have the Christmas holiday Monday, December 26th, and New Year's holiday Monday, January 2nd. That's all I have for the admiral report, except for the executive session.
And for the executive session, I recommend the board recess into an executive session to discuss the acquisition of real property pursuant to the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B6. Open meeting to resume at this location at 5:20. In addition to the commissioners, the county administrator, the assistant county administrator, county counselor, Chris O'Neill, John Hobbywachs, and Ben Burton should be included in the executive session, and Mr. Burton will be by via telephone. That would be my motion.
I second it.
And with this motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, a call of vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, so we are back out of executive session, we want to go, I want to make a motion to go back into executive session until 5:33. So I make that motion.
I would second.
So motion second to go back in until 5:33. Call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, we're back out of executive session, and...
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.